Excellent.
I've circled my email in case you ever need to contact me.
Okay, sure.
We have to conspire now. I'll nominate you.
I'll drop you an email here real quick.
So, I mean, we go to Mr. Gentry, I will accept chairman.
Turn my ringers off here.
Yep, I've already done that. Sounds like science. That tells me to get going. There's been times I've actually forgotten. The clock is a little bit slow.
Yes, it is.
Opposed or unopposed? Mr. Mark King, are you opposed or unoppo- or in favor of this? Thank you. You're number three. Before we get started, I'd like anybody who wishes to speak to fill out a speaker card so we get it, so we're organized here. The speaker cards are outside as you came in. Oh, she's got them there. All right. By seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing on our agenda is call to order and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is election of chairman and vice chairman. I've served for a whole year now. Chair will recognize it. Take any nominations.
I'd like to make a nomination. Like to recommend that we retain our current chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry.
I'll second that.
All right, seconded by.
Kim Green.
By Mr. Green. We'll also take nominations for the vice chairman or any other body interested in being a chairman. Nominations for our vice chairman. I'd like to nominate Chris Sumner for vice chairman again. Will you accept?
I will accept.
I'll second.
Mr. Southern, uh, seconds. All those in favor of the slate of officers, aye or no?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous then. Review and adopt agenda.
I'll make a motion we adopt the agenda as it stands.
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Sumner seconds it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Public hearing items, rezoning case, number two-two dash one-two dash PLB.
Mr. Chair, did we do the minutes?
Um, I'm sorry, did? I thought we just did.
No, we approved the agenda, not the minute.
Approval of minutes. Thank you. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion we approve the agenda.
Um, minutes.
Or minutes, yes, minutes.
A second?
I'll second.
Mr. Gentry seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now we get to the public hearing items, rezoning case, two-two dash one-two dash PLBD dash zero-zero-three-one. Mr. Justin, would you present this case to us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is property located on the west side of Happy Hill Road, which is State Road 2032, and it's located approximately seventeen hundred and forty feet north of the Montney Drive intersection. And it's Guilford County Tax Parcel 164961, located at seventy-five seventy-seven Happy Hill Road in Kernersville. This is within the, uh, this is ten point one five acres located within town limits of Stokesdale despite its Kernersville address. The request is to rezone from AG, which is agricultural with forty thousand square foot lot sizes, to RS40, which is single-family residential, also with forty thousand square foot lot sizes. The planning board will make a recommendation to the Stokesdale Town Council, which will have final authority to approve or deny the request. The applicants upon any major development of the property do intend to connect to Stokesdale's water system, from staff's understanding. And staff would note that this request is consistent with the Stokesdale future land use plan of residential. Thus, if approved, a future land use plan amendment is not required. And you have the descriptions of each district in your packets. The general character of the area is primarily a rural residential area with both agricultural and low-density, single-family residential uses. The existing land use on this property, there is one single-family dwelling on the ten acres. And to the north, there is single-family residential and agricultural land, to the south, single-family residential, to the east, single-family residential and agricultural, and to the west, it's undeveloped forested land that's adjacent to the Oak Ridge Extraterritorial Zoning Jurisdiction. There are no designated historic landmarks on or adjacent to the subject property, and there are no cemeteries known on this property. As far as transportation, this Happy Hill Road is a residential street. The property would be subject to NC DOT driveway permit requirements if developed, and there could be a traffic impact study required based on the overall size of any sort of large subdivision to the property that's to the west. But at this time, this request is only for rezoning. It does not include subdivision of this property. That would have to come as a separate process that would come back before the planning board. So, hopefully, everybody understands that that is, uh, this is just a request to rezone the property to the single-family residential.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Snyder from the board?
I've got one.
Mr. Sumner has one.
On the connection to the Stokesdale Water System, says they intend to, are they required to?
Uh, I don't know Stokesdale's water connection policy. Um, that's not in the land use ordinance that I'm aware of.
It is.
It is in the land use ordinance.
There is a ordinance that requires a connection within certain number of feet.
Okay, I'd have to look that up. Um, but the engineer can tell you whether they intend to actually do it, um, when they get up and speak. And I'll try to find that section of the code in the meantime.
Thank you. That was my question. Oh, sorry. No, that's great. Glad you listened.
Any other questions? There being no other questions from the board, I'm going to open it up to the public speaking. I'd like to do in favor first. So, all those that are opposed, I hope you have a speaker's card, and I will call in order that we received them. First one to speak in favor is Norris Clayton. Mr. Clayton, will you?
Uh, yeah, I must play the, uh, Greg here from, he's fifty-four.
All right, will you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Greg Garrett, and I work for RS Parker Homes. Our address is PO Box fifty-nine sixty-seven, that's High Point two-seven-two-six-five. Appreciate you, um, hearing our case tonight. I think I can make this pretty simple, um, I'm hoping at least. This, this request that's come before you tonight is actually a, um, what I would call a redo of a rezoning that came before this board about two years ago. And it is, um, basically access to a large track of, um, a large track of land that my company purchased. We call it Lakeside, but it's a hundred and twenty-six acres, and it's in three jurisdictions. You guys have the front door, which on Happy Hill Road, then you have a section there that's Oak Ridge, and then, you know, probably two-thirds of the, of the property is in Forsyth County. So, it's been a quagmire trying to navigate the various approvals needed to do this project. So, we basically have a project that's, that's fully approved for ninety-four homes. Many of them are on the lake in, in Forsyth County. And we, we got approved from this board, like, like I said, about two years ago, a, um, an access easement. Your ordinance requires to have a, um, to have a, a public road, it's gotta be an RS40 zoning. So, we had, um, a sixty-foot right-of-way that we acquired from Duke Energy. Some of you may remember this. And we rezoned that to RS40, so that could be our entrance into the development. Now, that entrance, as we really started looking at it, it does work, but, um, it's not real friendly to the environment. It's actually in a location of Happy Hill Road that is, um, not ideal. And plus, as a developer, you hate running a road without getting any lots. And so, because Duke Energy owned on both sides of that sixty-foot right-of-way, we were not able to, um, be able to get houses on a road that we're constructing. So, we came across this opportunity with Mrs. Schofer to acquire her property. Actually, met her through the rezoning process, um, two years ago. And, um, and so, we have her property under contract, of course contingent on this rezoning. But, um, our plan is to, um, ask you to rezone it from AG to RS40. On that ten, little over ten acres of land, we, we planned to, to put seven, six new houses and keep the, her house as the seventh. So, there'll be seven lots. We're taking one lot and break it in into, to seven lots. And then, like I said, um, one of the main things that was enticing us to acquire this property is that it's a better access to our bigger project known as Lakeside, um, that's directly to the west. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Just real quickly, on the water, yes, we, we, Norris Clayton is my civil engineer. He's been working on the water extension from, um, from one-fifty-eight, and that would, you know, we will bear that cost to bring it all the way down Happy Hill Lane into this entrance, that, this proposed entrance, um, for this property, and then take it on in through, uh, and right into Forsyth County. And there's been, um, all of that's already been, my understanding, Norris, you correct me if I'm wrong, but all, all those high-level conversations have already taken place. And I, I know, I know that the director of Utilities for Forsyth County spoke with somebody at Stokesdale about it. So, um, the only difference is, instead of it being where that Duke Energy, um, property is, we're, we're, we're actually gonna take it on up further, which will benefit the town and those homeowners that might be having problems with, uh, with well water. So, again, I'm happy to answer any questions. You have any technical questions? As I said, my, my engineer is here to, to answer those.
All right, I have a technical question. The line down one-fifty-eight is an eight-inch line. What lot, size line will you run to provide water to? I'm sorry, say anything? So, you'll have eight inches down Happy Hill and then into your new subdivision?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have a few, actually. You mentioned, you used, I think you'd use the term, and this is because I wasn't here two years ago.
Sure.
So, just trying to get caught up. You mentioned, uh, I think you used the term unfriendly to the environment for the existing access. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, so there are, um, two significant draws on that, um, Duke Energy, uh, parcel that we would have to cross over. And, um, in doing that, um, there is a, um, a permit that you have to get that we can get, but if we have a better way, I mean, it, to me and to RS Parker, it was a no-brainer when we then were able to find a property that was wide enough that we could run a road and get some houses along with it. The topo is dramatically better. So, the environmental issue is that the Duke Energy access that we had, had, um, stream, two streams that needed to be crossed. And because they're streams, they're jurisdictional, we would have to work with them on permitting. And we did go pretty far, and then this other opportunity arose, and it, it was, it was a no-brainer for us.
Okay, and just to follow up to that, you've mentioned that it was, um, the current access point was on Happy Hill Road was not id- uh, not ideal. And I, I'm assuming that's in terms of not the environment, but just other factors. Can you kind of go into that?
Yeah, just the, the slope of Happy Hill where that tie-in was located. Yeah.
Okay. At the, at the top of it, of your, um, conversation, you, you mentioned, um, the total number of homes. Can you state that again?
Yeah, so I, I, we currently have an approved project known as Lakeside, and it's a total of ninety-four lots.
Okay.
And so, in replacing the old entrance on the Duke Energy land to this track, we have seven there. So, that takes us up to a hundred and one. So, we're looking at seven lot increase to what was originally approved.
Okay. Is there any other way to get in and out of the subdivision?
Uh, there, there is on the Forsyth County side.
There is, okay.
Yes, yeah.
All right. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
So, there'll be two entrances to the subdivision eventually?
Eventually, um, yeah. Now, what, what we've done with the county is, they originally were all gonna connect, but we've asked the county to kind of treat them in, as separate, separate, um, tracks. So, in other words, the Forsyth County side and the Guilford side do not, will not connect. And that plan's been approved by the Forsyth County Commissioners.
So, how many lots will be coming through the Happy Hill entrance?
I believe it's seven plus thirty-one? Thirty-six.
Okay. So, about one-third roughly of the?
Any other questions from the board?
I've got one. Coming in off of Happy Hill Road, you're gonna put a road up in to this property?
Yes, sir.
All right. At the nearest point, is it wide enough to get one in? The way this thing is drawn, it doesn't give us?
It's tight. I know the part, part where I know where you're talking about. It's tight, but it, that you, we're, we're looking at a fifty-foot right-of-way, and there's at least fifty feet there. It's tight, but there, yeah, that, yeah, it can be constructed within the, what I have under contract.
All right. Does that answer you?
Mm-hmm.
Ron, any other questions? Okay. I'd like to then thank you for your time and effort. I'd like to call Mr. Joe Sink. Please state your name and address for us, for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Joe Sink. Thank you, Board, for meeting. I live at seventy-five hundred Happy Hill Road, just out beyond what they are proposing. I've been there roughly twenty-five years now, actually about twenty-seven. When I moved out there, I could not believe what a hassles I went through with the town of Stokesdale of getting my property squared away where I could live on it and pay insurance and taxes like I'm supposed to. Because when I went to get the insurance and taxes, they said, "You live in a no-man's land." Tell me what a no-man's land is. The board, tell me what a no-man's land is.
You're speaking. We're not answering.
Well, that's what the answer I got until the fire department in Stokesdale went to Raleigh and got it Riozone like it was supposed to be. Then I become a taxpayer to the town of Stokesdale. Now, I don't know why this development cannot use the water coming up one-fifty-eight. You already, you run there. Why are you coming out of Stokesdale? Tell me why.
My understanding is that there are water lines.
You already got water up one-fifty-eight all the way to Stokesdale.
Mr. Chair, questions should be directed to the, to the planning board.
Thank you. There is no answer for you. Right, from us, at least.
In Stokesdale now, it bind, y'all, you bind water actually from Madison because you had a new water tire put on sixty-eight. Am I not correct?
I can't answer you, and neither can anybody here on the board.
Does anybody in the audience know that for fact? Well, that is true. Stokesdale is buying water from Madison because you run it over on two-twenty to that new, two new plants that's built over there, and then on into Stokesdale.
Uh, it's not true. We're buying water from Winston-Salem.
That's correct.
You're buying water from where?
The city of Winston-Salem. That's the only place that, that the town purchases water from at this time. Yeah, that was my understanding, too.
That's not my understanding.
Yeah.
My understanding, you're buying it from Madison. That's why it was put in there.
That's not correct.
Yes, I don't know where I go. I, I, I heard that from quite a few people.
Mr. Sink, that's wrong. There's a map of the water system.
Another question. What are you, what is, what is development gonna do about the traffic that's out there? Right now, we are being run over by speeders, and we see a state trooper or a sheriff out there one time a month. I think the town of Stokesdale can spend a little bit of money or go somewhere and get us some more security out there. If you come out there at that, in that ti- any time during the day or at night, you'll find out the traffic that runs up. Has anybody done a, a, a traffic, uh, analysis of that road out there?
The, uh, the proposal indicated that traffic is currently five hundred cars or less per day.
It's how many?
Five hundred or less, less than five hundred.
Five hundred today? That sounds like a super highway, sir.
On Happy Hill Road, on Happy Hill Road.
That sounds like a super highway.
Le- it said less than five hundred per day.
That's a, that is not true. Are you counting the tractor-trailers?
I'm just quoting what's in this, what's in the proposal.
Well, that's not true. And then, when you have an accident on one-fifty-eight or you have it on sixty-eight, where is the traffic deferred to? Right through and over on Happy Hill Road or from one-fifty-eight over onto sixty-eight?
Mr. Sink, I'd like to ask you to make your comments more concise. You can comment. There's no point in asking questions here.
Well, I meant the comments may not be what you want, but the questions I'm asking is probably concerned to all these people sitting back here that lives in that area out there.
Well, you have my sympathy in terms of law enforcement coverage on the roads around here. I, I agree with you. I'd like to see more sheriff deputies myself. I'd like to see more state troopers on the reg- more regular patrol. And that's something for the town council to talk about. That's not for the planning board.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. In the interest of time, I'd like to limit everybody to three minutes. The next speaker is Andrea Mailer. If you would come up and give your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. I'm Andrea Mailer, um, reside at seven-five-eight-seven Happy Hill Road. To follow a little bit about what Mr. Sink was saying, I think there is, everybody in here would agree, there is a huge traffic issue. And more importantly, I think paramount to that is the safety concerns that come along with that. There, this is a narrow, curvy road, as you all know. Both of the entrances to have, to this proposed development, the one that's in question tonight for the rezoning off of Happy Hill Road, is at the crest of a hill. It's, it's a very bad place to have an entrance. With traffic flies down this road, tractor-trailers, I mean, everybody in here can attest to, we are inundated with traffic and accidents. Like, just recently, there was a bad accident about three weeks ago. The other proposed entrance is gonna be, like, um, Mr. Garrett said, over on Bent Ridge Forest Road. However, tr- Happy Hill Road is the main thoroughfare for which you're gonna get to and from that entrance as well. So, you add ninety-four, however many homes to this, this road, times however many vehicles, we're looking at a huge increase in traffic and safety issues. We're gonna be in dire issues, just like they've had on Hall River in the past couple of years, with people, you know, fatalities and, and crashes. I think safety is paramount to everything. Uh, we have a lot of other concerns, um, the ones that live on Happy Hill and the surrounding areas, the water lines, the, you know, traffic infrastructure. There's a lot of other things that go into this, but I think safety is the biggest issue that we need to be concerned about, and I hope that y'all can take that into consideration. And you don't want me to ask questions, but I think that, you know, I was just curious, what, what data do y'all have? On, you know, accidents on Happy Hill, um, the volume that that road is supposed to be able to sustain, the bridges on Happy Hill and Benefit Church? I mean, there's a lot that goes into this, just more than let's just, you know, put in a development and, you know, call it a day. So, I'd really like for y'all to really think about, please, um, on behalf of everybody in here, the safety. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Mark King?
She really spoke on most of what I was wanting to say also. And the seventy feet that they was talking about, I don't think, is seventy feet, it's fifty, maybe. Maybe. Were they talking about the drive coming in there? It, it may not be fifty. But definitely, uh, what they're talking about as far as that road goes, where they're talking about putting the driveway in, topping that hill, if, it could be a bunch of accidents if you get a development and cars coming out of it. Basically, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Stacy Garner? Garner, sorry.
I live at the corner of Happy Hill and Warner. I've lived there for twenty-three years. My husband's owned our property for about thirty-six years. Since we have lived there in the last twenty-three years, the traffic has gotten ridiculous. I no longer can walk at night. I can no longer push my children or my grandchildren down the streets or let them ride their bikes, and they used to be able to. Traffic is terrible. Cars are very loud. There's racing. I've called three or four times since last summer for cars racing on our road. Nothing happens. Not the last time, but the time before I called, the sheriff, she said she was in Brown Summit, and she'd be around in about twenty-five or so minutes. Of course, they just continue to race until the sheriffs come to town. You had a great sheriff years ago. You really did, and you let him go, and I think that was a big mistake. I mean, you really should have thought about the, your, the people of Stokesdale a little bit more before you just let a, a good sheriff go. But, um, the, the wildlife, the wildlife's gonna suffer. We have lots of deer. We have possums and fox and coyotes and all kind of stuff. It's amazing place to be, but it has gotten, um, almost unbearable. The loud vehicles, everybody wants to turn on to Warner Road from Happy Hill and let the whole neighborhood hear their engine. They wanna do donuts, and it's become dangerous. It's become a dangerous neighborhood. You can come to my house, you can spend the day at my house and see what it's like. It is not pleasant anymore. It is getting dangerous, and if you guys let this happen, especially on a hill, then it's on you all. Then y'all are gonna be responsible when more people get hurt, and, and, you know, it, it's gonna be bad. And it's already getting bad, and it's just a shame that, I mean, there's nothing rural anymore, you know? There's just, we're losing it. I mean, what little left that me and my neighbors have is, is almost gone. We didn't say anything for Shiloh. We let it go. We didn't say anything for Bent Ridge. But it's time that we stand up because enough is enough. I mean, we would like to have a little bit of peace left in our neighborhoods. It's the least we can do. We pay enough taxes. We should have at least a little bit of peace left, and it's a very, very bad idea. And if it passes and somebody gets hurt, you all are to thank. And we all warned you. It's bad. And it's a very, very bad idea. And if it passes and somebody gets hurt, you all are to thank. And we all warned you. It's bad. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you for your comment. I'd like to make a personal comment. 25 years ago, I purchased my land and home on Highway 68. The man that I bought it from, Mr. Um, Browning, he told me a story. He used to walk from this house to Stokesdale, and it was a dark road. That was a long time ago. Things have changed. 68, yes.
I've lived in this area almost my whole life. 68, 25 years ago, was not a dark road.
No, I'm not saying.
Oh, you said how long ago?
I bought it at 25 years ago. Mr. Browning, who has passed, he told me when he was a young man, he walked it, and not, and, and not a car passed him. Going to Stokesdale, the town center.
68's a major road though.
Today it is.
Happy Hill and Warner are not major roads. They were never meant to be that big.
Ma'am, the point is, my personal thing is. Time has changed. All right. Um, there are no, not, uh, that was the end of the speaker cards.
Chairman Louie, we have an email we need to read.
I'm sorry, one more.
So here's an email that was received, uh, let's see, today, correct? Uh, so directed to the planner, Mr. Snyder. Hello, Mr. Snyder. As residents on and near Happy Hill Road, we kindly request that the rezoning of 7577 Happy Hill Road from agriculture to residential, uh, it says RF 540, be denied. Uh, there has been a dramatic increase in development on and near this road over the past two to three years. Rezoning will allow for an additional large housing development, 100-plus homes, which will negatively impact the traffic and safety of the area. And will also append the balance between the current rural landscape and reasonable development. Please consider the concern of safety, traffic, and water. Water being the reason why the developer, R.S. Parker, desired to obtain the property at 7577 Happy Hill Road, to obtain running city water for, from Stokesdale to the entire development, which spans from Guilford to Forsyth County. Stokesdale residents do not want nor need the city water. Each resident currently utilizes a well. Such new water systems would be installed at the expense of the present residents. Our community has always been quiet and safe. I disapprove of rezoning. Mr. McEaren Martin.
And Mr. Chair, I also have a response to Mr. Sumner's previous question. Um, section 5-13.6 Utilities subsection B, Water and Sewer Connection, states that for a major subdivision within 1,000 feet of the nearest adequate lines of a public system, provided there are no geographic or topographic features that would make such connection infeasible, are required to connect.
I have a question for Mr. Winfrey. Can we recommend a rezoning, or put a condition on the rezoning that they connect to the water system?
No, if they, if this is a straight-up rezoning, so it's not a conditional use rezoning. Um, and the board cannot, um, impose conditions that have not been offered by the applicant.
But the applicant can offer a condition.
Yeah, um, well, this is a straight-up rezoning. Uh, this is not conditional use rezoning, right? This is a straight-up. Yeah, so at this point, if they want to do conditions, they do a different type of request. Um, this type of request is a straight-up rezoning.
This is a straight-up rezoning, but they can come back and say.
They have the ability to, to request conditional use, and then, then they could make, put conditions that would be applicable to them in any, any later on.
Okay.
But as, as the application stands now, it's a straight-up rezoning.
All right, understood.
And, and just to be clear, um, their plans may only say seven units. But if, if the property can be configured, uh, if you allow the rezoning, um, they're not necessarily limited to that if the zoning would allow more units on it.
Any other questions from the board?
I've got a question.
Mr. Sumner?
Um, and, and I hate to stick on the water, but it is a, an important subject around this town. Um, is there, so the town has something in place to sell this water outside the county? Because that's essentially, there's a very small portion of this that we're approving that's in Guilford County. The bulk of this project is in Forsyth County, and to my knowledge, I don't know if that's in, in place or not.
Do you guys have a multi-jurisdictional agreement on water service that you're aware of?
Not at this time. Can you answer that?
Just, just a real quick, you know, rebuttal period, um, that hopefully answers a lot of these concerns. First of all, this is the approved Lakeside Plan by Forsyth County. And although I guess we didn't get the paperwork to write in conditions for this, um, rezoning, what I have rezoned in Forsyth County, which we've already said is the lion's share of the project that's already approved, 94 lots already approved. So we're talking about seven additional lots, okay? Um, it, it does have a condition that we're getting public water from the town of Stokesdale. And like I said, I know for a fact that those high-level conversations have happened between Forsyth County and Stokesdale Public Works. Um, furthermore, uh, there's been a, a, a recent subdivision called Coal Water that also, um, went through the same process where, um, it's in Forsyth County, but it's getting Stokesdale water. So I'm not the first one to broach this. Um, as far as like a multi-jurisdictional, you know, set agreement, I don't know. I just know that these high-level conversations for Lakeside had already happened. So I'm committed to running water, um, all the way down. It's, it's more than 1,000 feet. I mean, it's like 1,700 feet, um, down Happy Hill Road. And at some point, I know right now residents aren't satisfied about that, but when you run, your well runs dry, that, that's going to be a nice, nice, um, asset to have. And, well.
Hey, everybody, calm down.
And one, one other thing to clarify, we, we are paying for that. Stokesdale's not paying for that line. We, the developer, will be running, we're designing, getting the plans approved by Stokesdale, and running that wa, that line on our nickel.
Hey, guys, no. Questions? Any more questions from the audi, um, from the board?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Um, the other side, let's say the west side of the development. Sixty-five homes roughly will be in Forsyth County. Are they within Kernersville town limits?
No, on, it's, uh, like I said, this has been a quagmire. Uh, it's, so it's the unincorporated area of Forsyth County.
Okay.
Um, but, yeah, everything's got a Kernersville address for what I have planned, but, but, but it's unincorporated.
And when you talked with the county, with Forsyth County, about possible points of entry for those 65 homes, what was the, um, I guess, the feedback from, from that meeting?
Before we answer that, everybody with a side quick conversation, will you take it outside, please? All right.
They, they were comfortable with, with it, um, only having one point of access.
Okay, can you, can you point to that, or tell us where that is on the map?
Yeah, Justin, do you have any, do you have my master plan on file?
Bring it up. Mr. Gentry? And that's the minimum, if he's got 50. If it's not 50 feet, he's got some lumber. Me, me, my entrance. Unfortunately, that's, that's, that's Stacy Farner. He's got 50, much better. He can do it. That's probably why it was 50 feet. If it was 45 feet, he couldn't do it.
I'm just talking in general.
He's just coming down here.
He's got it.
That's a minor.
Okay. All right, let's get back to business here. Mr. Gentry, is your question answered? It is. Okay. Chair, um, any other questions or things I need to do? We are ready for a vote then.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to bring to your attention, if you'd like to see, but we received a, um, signed, I'm not sure this is a legal petition, but it is, um, some signatures by residents in the area that are opposed to it. Would you like to see this before you vote?
How many signatures are on that?
There, there are some signatures on here.
Okay. I'll make a point that this board is only a recommendation. The final say is the town council, which happens whenever they decide to take a vote on it. Our job is a recommendation. So, Chair will entertain a motion to recommend or disapprove of this. Uh, or actually, to make a recommendation to town council. That's the motion.
I have one more question. I don't know if the county, if you can answer this or not. What type of traffic studies have been done at this point?
So, uh, DOT gave an estimated daily trips, which to me implies that they likely have not done a recent traffic study on Happy Hill. However, if there's a subdivision development, which clearly there's intent to do so, uh, as part of the technical review committee process, NC DOT does a direct review of any proposal, and they will look at any improvements that are required, um, based on the number of trips per day and additional trips per day that are produced.
Okay.
So there's possibility of a left turn lane, possibly XL-D cell lanes, uh, you know, widened shoulders, you know, any of those things are possible. Um, but that's all based on DOT, and if they require a traffic study, then they'll have to go out, hire a traffic engineer, and do a traffic study, and that will produce the, basically the information that DOT needs to determine what improvements are needed.
All right, thank you. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion of recommendation to the town council.
Uh, we need to close the public hearing.
Oh, all right. Public hearing is closed.
No, we need a motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Gentry makes a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll say it.
Mr. Southern seconds it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Now we can entertain a motion.
After reviewing this proposal, um, and the, uh, the work that the county's done, seeing as how this proposed rezoning act, action is consistent with the recommendation of future land use, and, um, no impact in terms of watershed, and what, what was stated in this, uh, report, um, and the fact that 65 of the homes will not be making use of this point of entry because they will be not connected to this part of the, uh, development. I make a motion that we propose to recommend this to the, to the board, to the town council.
To the town council. Mr. Southern seconds it. Let's take a vote.
Mr. Have a motion to recommend approval.
Yes, recommend approval.
Mr. Gentry?
Aye.
Mr. Sumner?
Uh, with comments. Um, the, for everyone here, I, I, I feel your pain with the traffic and everything like that, but that's not, that's not what is in scope of this board. That is the NC DOT. This does meet the Stokesdale Land Use Plan, and it meets everything that the town has outlined, so I vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Southern?
Aye.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
And I also vote aye with a comment. Having the developer run water up Happy Hill to the tune of 1,700 feet, I believe, is more than what our ordinances require. In the future, that water line will be a net benefit to the residents of Happy Hill Road.
No, no, we don't want it. We don't need it.
I, I said in the future. And I also vote aye. Motion passes. Okay, announcements. Any decision of the planning board may be appealed to the Stokesdale Town Council within 15 days of the planning board decision date by contacting the town clerk with a written notice of appeal. There is a $200 per case filing fee. The next Stokesdale Planning Board will be on Thursday, February 23rd at 7:00 PM. The next Stokesdale Town Council meeting will be on Thursday, February 9th at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, if I might briefly, um, I've been communicating with Mr. Lee about this. I don't believe that the ordinance, uh, when dealing with enforcement actions, it's typically, there's a $200 filing fee to, for a case. But I think an appeal to the town council of this case would not require a $200 filing fee.
Nor would it require appeal because you're simply recommending mine.
Okay, thank you. So, anybody can appeal to the town council without paying $200? Enter, Chair will entertain a motion of adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
We adjourn. Mr. Southern makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sumner, seconds. Thank you all. Well, one more. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously?
Yeah, so, so read this carefully. If you have questions, converse, and, and I can give you kind of.